Mayor Roland Dykes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mike Proffitt.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Here.
Attorney Woman Lana, auditor. Alderman Steve Smith.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fensham.
Here.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of previous meeting in your package. If you've had a chance to look those over, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes as presented.
I make the motion approved.
Say.
We have a motion to approve the minutes of previous meeting of August 10th, 2021. It has been properly seconded. Please, six, are your approval by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, motion carries. Proclaimations and our recognition of citizens by the mayor really only have two today. We'd like to wish our city administrator and our Alderman Hansel a happy birthday.
Thank you, Mayor.
All approved. Any nays?
Put down three nays.
They're coming a lot quicker.
Yeah, really.
Wait to get running. I'd like to just take one second here so we won't have to do that. I recognize all the department heads, all of you doing an excellent job, and I want you to know that you all been over backwards, do everything we asked you to do, and I just wanted to tell you, we appreciate you. You don't realize, we just appreciate you. Thank you.
Anyone else like to? Hearing none? Okay. Next item on the agenda is communications from the city administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since our last meeting, we have continued to have positives within our ranks of employees. Also have had some that have been exposed and had to quarantine. One thing that I did do, I think I've made most of you aware, but not everybody, as you know, when the federal mandate ran out the first of the year on paying people 80 hours of time to be off if they tested positive or were exposed to COVID, I opted to extend that. And with the city continuing to provide that benefit, although we were no longer reimbursed by the federal government. And so, the vaccine came out in late winter, early spring, and now, what a lot of places are doing, and doing even more than what we are, some are making, if you don't have, if you're not vaccinated, they're making you pay part of your insurance now. But that's not what I'm getting into. But what I did do was that we are at about 40% of our employees, maybe just a little over now, that have been vaccinated. And so, of course, I'm sure everybody has heard the president's declaration that it's his intent that every employer over 100 employees mandate that you either have to have, that their employees either have the vaccination or get tested every week. And they're going to try to enforce that under OSHA, Occupational Safety and Health Administration, which also comes to TOSHA and then down to us. Now, the state of Tennessee voted not to do, not to allow that, so they're going to, and they filed a lawsuit against it, so we'll have to see where that plays out. But anyway, what I have done, I put an order out this past month that if you choose not to be vaccinated, and that's everybody's right, to choose not to, but that the city is not going to give you time off for it. If that's a choice you make to not be vaccinated, then if you have to miss, you're going to have to take sick time, or vacation time, or comp time, something of your personal time to be out, just like you do if it's some other illness. And if you have had the vaccination and something happens, we'll continue to take care of you. But if you choose to put yourself in harm's way, then the city taxpayers shouldn't be liable for supporting you on that. And so, I did put that order in place this month, and unless you all have a problem with that, I'm going to continue to do that.
I agree with you.
Thank you. On our stimulus money, this is one of the most convoluted things I've ever dealt with. The state of Tennessee just keeps putting more requirements onto it. Now, you have to, they ask that you go through 10 weeks of training, which Tina has started, and before you do anything with it. Now, it comes to light today that the county has drawn down some of their money, and they couldn't have done the 10 weeks of training because it's only been going, this is only the second week of it. So, I know they've not done the 10 weeks of training that was supposed to be required before you draw down any money. So, I don't know, we're going to have to dig into that, how they managed to pull that off without meeting the requirements. But it seems that what the state is doing, to me, this is pure speculation, but the way it reads in some of the documentation they have sent out is there's, there is an option, one thing, there's an option on there to where that the city could say, we don't want to fool with it, we're signing away our rights to it, and the state gets to keep it. And the federal, the feds, the people, the cities of the 50,000 or more get their money directly from the federal government. They don't have to go through the state of Tennessee. And they've already gotten their money. And so, the state of Tennessee is making it harder on cities that get it from the state than the feds are. And I can't help but think that they're trying to make, because some cities have already signed away their rights to it because of aggravation. And it seems to me like it's possible that they're wanting you to get tired and fed up so they get to keep it and spend it the way they see fit. I'd hate to think that, but I don't know how else to look at it with the way that they just keep adding more and more requirements onto it that are really, you know, heavy-handed in what you have to go through to draw down the money or get a project approved. And so, we're going to try to find more out about how the county managed to pull money down when we were told that the state wasn't allowing any money out yet. So, we got to get to the bottom of how that happened, if indeed it has happened. And so, you know, we've got projects, what few projects it can be done about it, you know, we went, we hurriedly, when they first announced the money and told us what we could do with it, we tried to get things in line that we could do with it, what limited number there were. And now, it's hurry up and wait. And some of the things it talks about as far as it, that it's recommended it be in next year's budget, that'd be July 1 of next year. So, you know, I don't know why they were pushing you to get all this, get your plans in place if they're just going to turn around and make you wait a year to get it. I don't, a lot of it just does not make sense.
It's kind of the same, you're going through the same thing, same thing, told them one thing, doing something else, but they having a hard time with it.
They, they've constantly done that. The state has constantly changed their story on it, and changed the rules and the guidelines and what you can or can't do, or how you're going to have to go about to try to get the money. You know, it's, it's one of the worst organized things I've ever dealt with. But I'll try to keep you all updated each month as far as how it's going. One thing that I brought up last month about the travel expense, had been my plan to have something on the agenda tonight to revamp the city policy on travel, and we've done a lot of research on it, but I'm wanting to do a little bit more before I have something to bring before you all. I want the, the auditor is supposed to be here in October, and I want to have a meeting. I've talked to the auditor about it once before, but I just got to make sure that the auditor and us and you all are all on the same page. And I'll see. I don't think it's going to be a whole lot of travel going on in the next month or so anyway. But when I did go back and look at the numbers, they have went up a little bit since 2008. I would have thought they've gone up more, but it's went up like $6 or $7 per day since 2008. So, I was really surprised at how little it had actually went up in that amount of time. I would have thought inflation would have taken it much higher, but I'm going to continue to work on that till I got something that I'm satisfied with, that I feel like you all will be satisfied with. The Rhythm on the River concert, it was scheduled for this month. The Chamber of Commerce asked that that be postponed, both because of the Delta surge in COVID, and also because they have the street festival to get ready for. And so, right now, they have moved that to October the 23rd. And so, you all approved it, but you approved it for September. And so, they have asked that we move that to the 23rd, and I don't know if that would require any kind of a, I don't have it on the agenda, I just had it on here to inform everybody. Terry, would that, does that suffice?
Since we approved it, I think, today.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, James. Okay. Apartment of boards, commissions, and committees, we have none. Reports from committees, members of council, and other officers. Tampa Preservation Alliance.
That's your report, Mayor.
Item B is work ethic diploma program report by Love Henderson.
Yeah. Ms. Henderson contacted Regina and told her she wouldn't be here, be able to be here tonight, that there was actually no need for her to address the council, but that she would be dropping off a packet of information to be shared with you all. She has not done that yet, but when she does, we will see to it that you all get a copy of it.
Okay. All right. Item eight is old business, unfinished business. Item A, consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2021-07, amending the City of Newport Municipal Code Title IX, Business Peddlers, Solicitors, Et Cetera, Adding Chapter 10, Yard Sale, Garage Sales.
Mayor, that was a excellent job of reading, catching into the record, and we would need a motion, a second, and a roll call vote.
He does that to me quite a bit. But anyway, all right, you heard, you heard the consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2021-07. What is the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to, for second reading, this is board's, we want to vote for that action.
All right. We have a motion on the board then to second. It's been properly seconded. We will need a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Here.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Proffitt.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, just for information, we have already, Code Enforcement Officer Grant Webb has already been notifying these kind of semi-permanent yard sales that go on, he's already been stopping by and informing them of the impending change in the ordinance so that they won't get blindsided by it. And they seem to have been already starting to clean up, so.
I've noticed that on Woodlawn.
That was my last thing. Oh, really? Some of it's going out, though, Steve. It's part of being clean, part of coming back.
Okay. Well, it's official now, so.
Yes, sir.
Item nine is new business. Item A is consideration of resolution number 2021-05, Driver Safety Matching Grant Program.
Mayor, this is the second of two grants that we apply for annually through the public entity partners, formerly TML, where that they are our provider, and for our liability and workers' comp insurance, these are grants that they provide to help with the city to try to improve their, our record with damages or injuries and so forth. And so, this is a matching grant, like the other one we passed last month, that we apply for each year.
Board's, what is the board's pleasure, please?
Motion to approve resolution 2021-05, direct there.
All right. We have motion to approve consideration of resolution number 2021-05, Driver Safety Matching Grant Program, has been properly seconded. We need a roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Proffitt.
Yes.
Thank you, Tina. Item B is discussion of charter change for the fire department by Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes, gentlemen, we've had this discussion a couple of times over the years, and this is actually a continuation of that same, our same statement I made back in early this summer about taking the hirings from the fire department off of us and put it with the city administrator, chief of police, or, I'm sorry, the fire chief. So, I'm not really looking for a decision tonight on what to do, but I would like a decision on how we should proceed with it. And on Terry Hurst's advice, we needed to start this process because it does involve a charter change. So, we're just in getting everything in line right now, ready to do that. There's some things I'd like to see changed within it, make it a little more like the police department's made, civil service board. We can get input too from the fire civil service board and the fire department so that they don't think anything underhanded, or some type of a coup is about to be staged or something, but that's basically what this is.
The, in Alderman Hansel and I's conversation, and city attorney Hurst also as well, about this issue, when the police department's charter was modified, and that's been 20 years ago when it was done, the city council sent the matter to the civil service board and told the civil service board the changes that they were interested in implementing in the charter. The civil service board put together the changes that, to be made, they voted on it and sent it back to city council, and city council voted on it and sent it to Nashville. So, I would assume that this one would need to be followed the same procedure that that one did. I mean, I don't know that it has to be done that way. I don't know that it's in writing anywhere that it has to be done that way. But that's how the police department change was made, was in conjunction with and primarily through the civil service board.
Jeremy, you on board with this?
Yeah. And like I said, civil service will still be a part of the process and stuff. It would just be, people may not have to be embarrassed or put in situations too that's in a public meeting for situations that, that may have to be terminated or something like that, so.
It allows what Mr. Hansel's wanting to do primarily is make it to where that personnel matters don't have to come in here in front of the board and be a, be a public spectacle, that it could be handled through HR and myself as opposed to having to come in here and be a part of a public meeting and could be handled more, not trying to hide anything, it's just not wanting to embarrass people, just outright embarrass people.
It's already been handled that way in the police department. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I think it's pretty much the way it's handled citywide, department wide.
Yes, sir. The fire department is the only department that, that is current, that is, that's the case, that everything has to come in front of you all, and we're probably going to have one for you shortly.
I think the hiring and firing decisions should be yours.
There's a couple of other things in there that Mr. Hurst and I talked about that possibly want to be looked at, that's kind of outdated as far as pay scales and so forth, that are mentioned, that might want to be removed, were removed from the police version, and might want to be looked at being removed out of this one. That'd be y'all's pleasure. But that's something that was done in the, in the police version, and Mr. Hurst pointed, I'd forgotten about it, but Mr. Hurst pointed out to me that that might be something that we needed to think about, and I agree with him.
Okay. We're, this is an item that doesn't require a motion or a vote, so is anyone else having to?
Well, we need to ask you while we're going down there.
Well, you need to, yeah, y'all need to be able to decide what you want to recommend to the civil service board, but that does not have to be voted on. It has to be voted on when it comes back. So, it don't have to be voted on to go, but it would have to be voted on when it comes back to here to be approved, to be sent to Nashville. Then it would have to be voted on here. Okay?
Just from a practical standpoint, it might be a good idea, Mayor, for Alderman Hansel and our two or three other council members to meet with the civil service board to come up with something that everybody can agree on and bring it back to the council next month, because we do need to move on it before the first of the year if we're going to change the charter. It has to go through the legislature. The governor has to approve it.
Like I said, this is something we've been discussing back in my and Bobby, the coaches' first term, we need to get something done. We've talked about it long enough, I think we need to do something.
Yeah, me too.
With the civil service board meeting.
A week from tonight, next Tuesday.
So, we're going to appoint a committee?
Well, yeah, civil service board meeting.
Well, I would think that Alderman Hansel probably lead that committee. Would you be available to meet with them?
I'll update my schedule and see if I, if not, I'll work something out.
Okay. And you said what, say, three?
Whatever.
Two, three?
I'd be glad to. Okay, appreciate that.
Okay.
We're all four, I reckon, I mean, that.
Oh, yeah, we're all four, yes.
I think it's a good idea.
To meet with, meet with the civil service board next.
Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
We normally meet around four, but we might get, if we could adjust the time.
I'll call you tomorrow.
Okay. All right. I mean, they, we'll see with them, but there's, there's three members and our secretary, so we might be able to move it around if we need to.
I appreciate that.
Alderman would like to be involved in that meeting, or I know Steve has volunteered, Alderman Hansel, anyone else?
That ought to be enough, if all of us already agreed on it. I don't know why we had to meet a whole bunch of times on it.
Okay. All right. You guys, then, it's agreed then that Alderman Hansel and Alderman Smith will meet with the civil service board next Tuesday, and will bring back recommendations to the full board.
What I was going to ask, Terry, last time, did MTS draw up the final draft of that?
They do.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
They draw up the official language much better than I can do.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
They're really good working with us. When we come to them and tell them what we've got.
Any other discussion? Okay.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item C, is consideration of sale of City of Newport property 119 North Woodlawn.
Do you want to start?
Me?
Yeah, do you want to start? Tell them where we're at, because, I mean, the letter was addressed to you technically, so.
Well, as y'all know, we've been looking at these, at the property down on Woodlawn that we, we got an offer on a couple of months ago, and then when we got that offer, we had a counter offer to come in unofficially, and we didn't have it in writing last month, and we asked that that be put off till we could give them an opportunity to put an official offer in writing. You now have that offer in front of you up there, and a representative is here tonight, the primary person involved in that. And so, the original offer from the one individual is for one property downtown. The counter offer from this gentleman is for both properties downtown. Now, the one property that, that he is interested in is where currently the dog pound is, the animal control building. And in the letter there that has been provided to y'all, it stated that the properties will be maintained and that we will be allowed to continue our animal control operations there as long as necessary, which it's our goal to be out of there in a few years, as soon as we can get some other arrangements worked out. We've got a plan in place for how we're going to handle that, and so, he says we can stay there for a dollar to continue operating out of that until our other operation is viable. And so, that's, that's kind of it in a nutshell. Now, the, the original offer that came in on the one property, that, when that gentleman found out that it had been postponed, he verbally told the receptionist that he would increase his offer, but he never provided that in writing. So, I can't, I mean, I don't have anything other than her saying he told her that, so the only offer we officially have is what you have. There was no, no increase came in. And so, but he, he was only interested in the one property. This buyer is interested in both properties, but will allow us to stay in the one and continue to operate out of it as long as we need to.
219 East Main is the address of the animal control building for the record.
119 Woodlawn. All right. The board, you have the package in your, before you. What are you, what's the board's pleasure?
Was there some mention last month that they would pick up the cost of the roof?
That was mentioned when we, when we spoke on the phone, that came up, and it is, it does state in the letter that maintenance would be provided for both buildings. I'm assuming that includes that, that roof. We, the animal control building needs a roof right now, bad, and we're going to, if, regardless of whether this sale goes through or not, there's going to have to be a roof put on it pretty, pretty quick, in short order. And so, if this sale is made to, to this individual, then that will, a roof to go on that building will probably be in the neighborhood of $35,000 to put a roof on it. And so, and that's going, that's judging by what it costs us to put a roof on Station 2 at the fire department, which has a similar square footage as that. And so.
Which is $35,000, not coming out of taxpayer money.
And so, that's, you know, I mean, that's, I think that's a, I think that's a very good offer to allow, to put a roof on it and allow us to stay there as long as we need, I imagine. That's a pretty good offer.
I think it's a good offer.
I think it's a good offer, too.
If you want, Steve, but, no, no, I would just say, I would recommend making the motion to sell contingent on the contract of sale has language that the roof is to be repaired on that building within 30 days of closing. Does that sound?
I was about to say, verbal's good, but written's better.
Well, and I think since you've given, the council gave the city administrator the ability to negotiate with potential buyers for those properties, that, that would still stand, right, Terry? So, he could negotiate the contract as long as it was met what the recommendation is.
Absolutely. But, having said that, I still think the council ought to give them the authority to go ahead and sell it to this buyer.
And that will sadly end, what is it, Vision 2020?
I see that the list.
Oh, yeah? Okay.
I understand, Mr. McCarty, you're inclined, both agree to that, of stipulations you made.
Appreciate your time straightening down, down Newport up there.
It looks better, the work that's been done already down there looks better.
We need something better.
How soon would, how soon will we start seeing some type of change down there?
Immediately.
Right now, with our, so we'll see.
Has more already been done down there also?
As far as plans go, it's kind of, it's, yeah.
And to expand on what Gary said, I would also recommend that there be a time limit And to expand on what Gary said, I would also recommend that there be a time limit put on the other property as far as the minimum timeframe on when some type of renovation would have to begin on it.
And that's typical.
It's been down for years, nobody's done nothing with it.
Right. And that's just to protect the town.
What's the reasonable amount of time?
City Hall used to be down with those building gardens, man.
I would... I think something reasonable and typical would be within... Once the city, I would say what we could go with, once the city leaves the 119 East Main, within 365 days of exiting the building, the rehabilitation work begins beyond the roof. And then if you... That seems reasonable. And then... Because I think the idea is to do one large retail, commercial, mixed-use development project, and they would need that building to... So it kind of puts us on a timeline, too, to move forward with our project, which is a good... I mean, that is a good thing, too.
But you're saying 365 days?
From the... Yes. Once we're out of the animal control building.
But how soon would we do the roof if we can't...
Yeah. Roof would be within 30 days of closing. Yeah. Because that's... We need that sooner rather than later. Yes, sir.
Okay. That's one. Yeah, we couldn't give the 365 days.
No, it's going to have to be fixed because it's leaking bad, and we've patched it as far as we can patch it.
So Colin Smith, you had begun to make a motion.
Yep.
Can you remember what it was?
Martin Carter that we...
It needs to include giving the city administrator the authority to continue to negotiate, and then you've heard the rest of it.
Yeah. And with 30 days on the roof and 365 days to fix the second building, so I make that motion if that makes any sense.
Same.
Okay. We have motioned it on the board. It's been properly seconded. This will roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Prophet?
Yes.
I'm glad to see approval that's going down there.
Motion carries. Congratulations. Our next item on the agenda is bids, purchases, and expenses, of which we have none, comments from citizens.
I'd like to ask Lucas Graham if he would, if you mind giving us a little update on the things you and I talked a little bit, that this little bit of stuff, improvements going on, what's going on with yours. What's ConAgra's situation?
We didn't want to bring that up, but...
It's okay. I can give an update. So as most of you are aware, ConAgra will... You've got the warrant notice and all that coming up. Operations will cease in October of this year, so not too far from now. Production will stop, and they will start... It will keep some staff on payroll to help dismantle equipment and get it packed and shipped at the Broadway campus. There's still inventory at the distribution center, and that will remain until up to February 1st of 2022. Since then, the property has been purchased, or ConAgra has sold that property to a real estate investment company called Phoenix Investors of Milwaukee. They're actively looking for tenants, and I think what Coach was alluding to that I'll share with everyone here is that we are in, we're actually in final two as of today for state-led project, Project Gold Star. And Project Gold Star, it would be a significant job count improvement if we can land that deal. We're negotiating with them, and I was on the phone with their CEO. We're walking into the meeting this afternoon. So it's going well. They filled out their state applications for the incentives, et cetera. So we're negotiating with them. It's not a done deal until it's signed, but just to make everybody aware.
Y'all are making an effort to get something back in that building and try to help...
Absolutely.
...leviate a lot of the problems. A lot of people with ConAgra's concerned about this, which I understand why they would be, but...
Project Gold Star's job count commitment based on our state incentives within five years is 500.
Great.
Yep.
Tell them about August 8th. It's the wedding day, right?
Oh, yeah. Wait, August 8th?
They say August and October, October.
Okay. There you go. There you go.
Yeah. Tuesday picnic.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the Newport bypass finally made the bid sheet, the T-Doc, after many years, and dove smart account to me and Gary whining and complaining for the last five at every RPO meeting. But it's finally on there, and that looks very positive. Spoken to several of the groups looking at that, and so very optimistic we'll get that bid let out and get that project started here later this fall and into the winter.
A lot of things looking up for our city and county. Appreciate the job you do.
Thank y'all. Is that what you want me to talk about?
Yes, sir. That's exactly what you want me to talk about, but tell them how the turn of beverage kind of went on.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Turn of beverage is... If you're not drove up there, I encourage you to do so. You can drive up to gravel lot and take a look if you want. But their building is just about done. They started putting down concrete for their driveways and parking lot now. They're continuing construction on for the next couple of months. They're hoping their equipment will be here second or third week of... Or, I'm sorry. Now Gary's got me going here.
You're welcome.
Of October, and hopefully we'll start hiring their first round of folks first of November, so...
Wasn't another plant supposed to come in here, too? Or do you love the same thing?
Uh, well, I...
Okay, it's good news.
It will, but it's a coded project, so I can talk about that. It's on my staff report. But we are a final three contender right now for Project Prescott as well. That's another big project. That'll be a new build project if we get it. And I cannot remember what the last... What I code that project, but it's another high job count, new build. We're in final two or... Yeah, final two with... I can't believe it. I think I called it Project...
It don't matter.
Project Mod is what I called it. Yeah, that is what we called that one. But they are a construction manufacturer, another high job count. That'd be 400. I think they have 450 jobs on their five-year forecast.
That's my thing, brightening up for us here.
Yeah. We have a lot of movement right now, and those are definitely consuming today. So not all doom and gloom. We've got good things on the horizon, I believe.
Might as well mention Love's Travel Center while you're there.
Yeah, well, Love's is coming along. If you not drove out there, do that. They got their canopies up. Just for everyone's reminder, they're going to have over 75 people on their staff at full capacity as well. And they'll have multiple shifts in place, and some of those positions may surprise them well, especially for their supervisor positions. And there's about 20 or 30 of those, so...
With all this information you're giving out, making people from ConAgra that's getting laid off that's been worried to death, it's sort of giving them a little bit of hope and stuff, good paying jobs coming in maybe to help with their problem.
Yeah. And on top of that, we have... We still have very strong interest in the remaining sites at the Innovation Park as well. You got two, actually Prescott and Mod are looking at sites there, but in addition to those, there are three more that have... are working on offers right now to look at the site, so... It's good interest right now, and everyone should feel good about that going forward. It's an interesting time, to say the least, with building materials and labor shortages, et cetera, right now. Anybody in construction industry will tell you right now, it's an interesting time, to say the least. A lot of lead time, materials are short, but anyway, we're all moving in the right direction, and the interest is higher than it's ever been right now.
Appreciate the job you and Gary's done. Keep it up.
Thank you, Coach. All right.
Any other comments from citizens wishing to be heard? Hearing none. Next item on the agenda is a motion to adjourn.
I'd like a motion to adjourn.
You want to get a sec, Terry?
I'm sick.
We are adjourned.